My pleasure. Trustee Householder.
Present.
Trustee Lewis.
Present.
Trustee Rocha.
Here.
Vice President Hernandez.
Here.
President Hack.
Here.
We have a quorum.
So after having done the roll call, establishing the quorum with all the members present today this evening, I would, as President of the Board, like to share a few thoughts with you before we go forward this evening. Because recently, three Board members of San Francisco were recalled, we all know that by voters, by a fairly substantial margin. And CSBA, in their California School Board Association's weekly newsletter, sent all Board members, and I'm sure we've all read it, as we always do, they had a few thoughts to share with each of us. So I'd like to share two of them publicly with you tonight, before we go any further into the agenda this evening. And these are the two quotes from that letter. First one is, in quotes, "That the school board must focus on the essentials of delivering a well-run school system above all else." Unquote. The second one is, in quotes, "Educational issues remain a potent motivation for voters, parents, and educators. Those ideas must be built on the foundation of the government," the school board, "that does the essentials well, knowing that our fundamental responsibility is educating our children going forward." So having read that, having said that, let's go forward. Right, please, some pledge.
Absolutely. All right. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America. To the Republic, for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Section number two, Superintendent's Report, Stephanie.
Yes, good evening. So I want to share with you three items this evening. The first is that, as you recall, the Board on January 22, 2020, approved the installation and donation of a plaque from Blue Star Moms. And we're happy to announce that they're going to be dedicating the memorial at Antioch High School to honor Daniel Sheal, I hope I'm saying that correctly, and John D. Aragon. That'll take place Saturday, March 12, at 11:00 a.m. It's long overdue because of the COVID shutdown, but we do hope that you will be able to attend.
You said it is virtual.
No, it's in person.
It's in person.
Yes. And then we have our, we had to delay our Black History Celebration as a district. We are moving forward with that this Friday evening. That will take place at Black Diamond Middle School in their theater at 6:30 p.m. And again, we are hopeful that you will be able to join us. And finally, I want to congratulate our Association of California School Administrators, Administrator of the Year. We have our very own Associate Superintendent Christine Ibarra, Central Office Administrator, Director Amy Betancourt, Curriculum and Instruction Administrator, Principal Casey Lewis from Belshaw Elementary, is Elementary Principal of the Year.
Very good.
Jose Hernandez from Antioch High School is the Secondary Co-Administrator of the Year. Lorraine Torres is Elementary Co-Administrator of the Year. Our new principal of the Thomas Gaines Academy, Natasha Thomas, who stepped right into that role, and we actually had to reach out to her and say, "Don't you know you want to do this?" She wasn't quite sure. She's done a phenomenal job. She is the Educational Options Administrator of the Year. And finally, Carrie Downey, who works in our Nutrition Services Department, she is Classified Employee of the Year. And Christine Ibarra and Amy Betancourt have actually made it to the next round, so we're excited to see.
Wow.
Hear all about that. And I'm looking forward to announcing our Teachers of the Year. I don't know if that's public yet, Christine?
Not yet.
Miss Ibarra? Sorry, not yet, so we'll keep that close. But excited about that announcement, as well as our Classified Employee of the Year. Those are my announcements this evening. Thank you.
Stephanie, could you send us a copy of those names and those things, all the stuff you just shared?
Absolutely.
Because my mind, I hear it, but then I forget.
Absolutely.
Yeah, that's good. All right, school reports. School report from Diablo Vista Elementary School.
Thank you. I will be introducing Diablo Vista Elementary School. They are thrilled to have students back on campus. Their focus is on social-emotional health of staff, students, and families through meditation at staff meetings led by teachers, school rules reviewed daily, be safe, kind, and responsible, Second Step program led by counselor and teachers, and PBIS splash attacks. You'll see that in the slideshow later. They are truly, they truly believe in small group instruction, and they want to thank the school board for funding of the full-time reading intervention teacher, reading intervention teachers working with three to six students at a time, ELD groups by the bilingual instruction aides and teachers, counseling groups. And they thank you for watching, and they hope that the presentation that they have prepared for you sheds some good insight into your school. So with that, Joe. Mr. Gaines.
Okay. Let's go on to section four, public comments from the public.
Yeah, we have a, sorry, we have a recording.
Sorry about that.
Welcome to Diablo Vista Elementary, the home of the Dolphins, where our Dolphins create the time for you to perform. Students were so excited to walk after the new Diablo Vista staff and return to in-person learning this year. For our first readers, this is the first time they had been able to enjoy our beautiful campus. They love playing outside, looking at the beautiful plants, trees, and flowers on our campus, as well as seeing the wonderful view of the hills and mountains. Diablo Vista Dolphins always work on being safe, kind, and responsible when they are on their playground. This sign helps to give our students ideas and tools when having conflict on the playground. This way, they can settle their problems and move on to playing their favorite activity. There are many activities for our students to participate in on the playground. Here we have fourth and fifth grade students in a great game of kickball. They love seeing who can kick the ball the highest, the farthest, and of course, which student is the fastest. We also have students enjoying our swings. As you can see, the view from the swings is quite beautiful with mountains and hills in the backdrop. Our students love to see if they can go as high as their friends, but we're always reminding them that we must be safe and responsible when using our school equipment. Here we have adventures in Ball Wall. Our students play regularly, as they always are challenging one another to see who is going to be the best that day at recess. Sometimes they'll get into tournaments throughout the entire day or week, just to see who the champion is. Our students love this activity and have learned to play it well with the guidance of our P.E. teacher and noon duty supervisors. Our students also enjoy playing on the play structure. This is an area where they can use the climbing wall, the rainbow stairs, swing on the monkey bars, or go down the fire pole. This is always a very busy and active area on our playground. Here we see celebration from Halloween. We had students dress up and were lucky to be able to host a parade on our campus. It allowed for students to walk our track, showing off their fun costumes and getting to see what their classmates enjoyed. Here in the front picture, we have our admin team at Diablo Vista, starting on the left with Mr. Allen, our custodian, Ms. Stone, our vice principal, Ms. Yan, our school counselor, Ms. Basola, our school principal, and Mr. Torres, our P.E. teacher, and just overall extra help. We couldn't do it without the whole team. Students enjoy spirit days. Here we see that our students were able to wear their antlers, dressing in red, green, and white. They also built snowmen in their classroom, many writing stories to go along with how their snowman was built or what happened during their snowman activities. We love celebrating all of our holidays and showing our school spirit. Mrs. Yan is an integral part of our Diablo Vista Elementary School. She helps to incorporate the Second Step program in our classrooms. Ms. Yan also pulls small groups to help students with conflict management, including teaching them iMessages and how to handle difficult situations. Ms. Yan also gives our students toolbox tools to help with some of their social-emotional skills, giving them the power to know when to stop and breathe, or take time for themselves. Ms. Yan also does our bulletin boards for our students at school. During Hispanic Heritage Month, she incorporated information about several people, including six of our own Diablo Vista Elementary staff that have Hispanic heritage. We also see that she made College and Career Awareness Month as a bulletin board as well. This gives students the opportunity to look at different types of jobs, some that may require college, as well as look at the different college banners to see where they might be interested in attending. Currently, we are celebrating Black History Month and Kindness Month. Ms. Yan puts information up about different members of the Black community, as well as sharing kindness with others. Ms. Yan has created a whole program where students can earn golden tickets when they show exceptional amounts of kindness, and then their name can be drawn for a special prize at the end of the week. Ms. Yan does a great job in supporting our students and our staff. At Diablo Vista, we know reading is an important part of any academic career. Our students need the ability to read in order to gain their full education. This is why we have spent time creating a great reading intervention program. Our students are grouped based on their needs, so teachers can really focus in on the area that they are struggling with to give them the best supports and allow them the most growth. These intervention groups are between three and six students. We have already seen a lot of growth this year and are hoping to really move students forward, giving them all the ability to read at their grade level. We saw that the students loved to play, but they also love to work. Here we see a variety of classes working on different activities, spelling, science, snowmen. We have some teachers working with students outdoors, giving them a new learning environment, and other students working on an activity where they're trying to check out if they can throw a ball a certain height to get it where it needs to go. We are always learning at Diablo Vista. Next, we see students being creative. There are science lessons, there are art lessons happening, as well as writing. Our students are diligent in their work and love to show all the skills that they have learned in their classes. Our teachers do a great job of providing a variety of opportunities for our students to learn, giving them hands-on opportunities, total physical response activities, as well as more traditional writing activities. Splash attacks are part of our PBIS program at Diablo Vista. Students can earn a splash attack by showing us that they are safe, kind, or responsible. At the end of the week, each teacher pulls three to four splash attacks out, and those students get to come down and choose a prize from our prize table. We incorporate a variety of different prizes and always make sure to keep it updated so that students will have options of things that they enjoy and help keep up that positive behavior that we love to see from our kids. We remind them always to be safe, kind, and responsible when they are at school and at home. Black History Month is being celebrated around our campus this month, and as you can see, we have a beautiful poster in our cafeteria reminding everyone that they are welcome here. We have students who are working in their classroom, making the world awesome, using art and talking about what they want to do to help make the world better. We have students who have learned about Martin Luther King and have written about what their dream would be for the world. We see students, again, incorporating different skills such as typing, art, writing, penmanship. We are so proud of what has been accomplished this year. We love our Diablo Vista Elementary, and we love our Diablo Vista Dolphins.
You know, maybe the next high school that we have, you know, get some kids to record some of this. I think this is a great, I really, even though obviously we want to see people in person, I think that this is wonderful. So thank you, Diablo Vista.
Any other comments? Okay, let's go on to four. Four A, public comments from the public. I have two speakers. I have Beatrice Hernandez, and then I have Derek Carson.
Hi, everyone. We're at the third meeting of Gary Hack's term as Board President, and still, he's managed to accomplish not much more than shortening the time we spend in this room bi-weekly. For someone who has historically been hypercritical of others' understanding of Robert's rules and parliamentary procedure, I would have assumed that they wouldn't have to be prompted multiple times per meeting to follow proper decorum. Now, while I might give more patience to somebody who was stepping into the role for the first time, this is President Hack's third term as Board President. Is this a so-called experience that the Board needed to have? I don't just bring up these criticisms to bash President Hack, but because I want and expect more out of this district. We cannot continue to settle for mediocrity. The students deserve more than that. The lack of self-awareness this district has is concerning. A disagreement, critique, or even just a lack of praise shouldn't be enough to send the Board spiraling. You all should be consistently evaluating yourselves and each other to make sure that you're doing everything in your power to make this district better. I'm tired of sitting at these meetings where people boast about all the good our superintendent is doing as an excuse to not evaluate her, and then in the same breath, trash our students like it's their fault they're not getting the support they need to do better. It's clear to me that we're failing our students, and we need to do more to help them. But are you even willing to look within yourself and ask whether you're the person to do this job? Thank you.
Hello, good evening. My name is Derek Carson.
You can pull that up if you'd like. It's a little low. There you go.
Thank you. Representing the Cavalo and Sycamore area, also Genesis Church for my mentor and pastor, Damon Owens, would like to know more about the, or upcoming and after-school programs for the youth in the area, and also what I've noticed dropping off my three children at their schools in the morning is drug uses around the area. I don't see a lot of police presence in the area, which I understand it's a lot going on in the city, but again, I think the kids deserve to have that safety in the morning and evenings being picked up. Thank you.
Sir, if you leave your contact information with Miss Ibarra, she'll meet you down there. We can contact you and kind of share some of our plans moving forward and what we currently have.
Thank you.
I just received a third card for four A, which would be Velma Wilson.
Good evening. Good evening, Board. Thank you to those that were able to join in on the PTA 125th Virtual Founder's Day event last week. Again, I'm so proud of the work that PTA does in and out of the classroom. One of the initiatives, as I heard the previous speaker talk about school safety, that is one of the things that PTA champions is street smarts, and we really rally on the parents to help with those efforts. As PTA is a parent-volunteer organization, and really want to get our parents out there, visible on the streets, helping to make sure that our students are getting to school safe, because as we see staffing shortages from our law enforcement officers through the city, it's, it's just, that's what's the reality. So I do encourage those, if you are not a member of the PTA, get involved and become a member and let your voice be heard, so we can help support those types of initiatives. One, I want to, I'm not sure if this mic is on.
It is, but it's not working good. Here, you can use this one.
Start the time. Over. Just saying. I need all of my three minutes. I do want to say congratulations to two of our students in Antioch Unified, Shatavia Porter from Deer Valley High School and Jordan Cummings from Antioch High School, on their placement in the Lions Club International Speaker Contest. That contest was held last week, and I am proud to announce that Jordan Cummings will be advancing to the next round, and will be speaking on the theme, "How Can Kindness Reunite Our Country?" I believe that is something that we all can reflect on in this time. As we come to a close of Black History Month, please join the students of AUSD as they honor the rich history of African-Americans during a Black History Month celebration on this Friday at 6:30 p.m. in the Performing Arts Theater at Black Diamond Middle School. Mary McLeod Bethune once said, "We have a powerful potential in our youth, and we must have the courage to change old ideas and practices so that we may direct their power toward good ends." Really think about that quote, because this is, we are AUSD. I am so loud and proud about the work that you all are doing. Despite this pandemic and what the changes that we have made, we have persevered. We have the hope that we can continually to add and to pour into our students' lives, and I want to say thank you. As we get ready to come into the month of March, Women's History Month, I want to thank all of the women leadership, from the staff, to our teachers, to everyone that makes it possible to make sure students are getting what they need. We do have some work to do, but guess what? We need to all unite and come together. We can't speak on kindness when we're not being kind. Thank you.
So Velma, would it be possible to get, and I don't know if it's appropriate, but if we can get the announcement that that student is advancing, because I think that this is something we need to highlight. You know, when our kiddos do well, we need to make sure that they get the recognition they deserve.
The gentleman from the Lions, or the student from Antioch High School who's advancing in the Lions.
Oh, Jordan Cummings?
Yeah.
Yes, I can actually send that, I'll send that to President Hack, and he can disseminate it to the entire Board, and I'll, or I can disseminate, give it to Superintendent Anello, and she can actually make sure, because I really do believe that you're right. We should be making sure we support that. He is going up, he is vying to get $21,000, and so that's a lot of money. Thank you to Mary Rocha, who was actually one of the judges for that event.
Well, I think we should celebrate both, so if we can get both.
If you could give it to Stephanie, and she can disseminate it to us, that'd be great.
Yes, I'll do that.
We celebrate all our kiddos.
Four B, speakers from the district, two of them, Sarah Neve and Ken Kent.
Good evening, Board members and community. Good to see everybody. My name is Sarah Neve, French teacher at Antioch High School. Quick question as to what happened to getting a student Board member that process? It was kind of a two-step, I think something needed to happen to get the position opened, and then there needs to be time for the kids to run and get elected. We still have three months of school left. I think we have some time, so just sort of relighting that a fire. Maybe we can get that going and have someone in place for the fall. It would be really great to have some student voice on the Board, have a student sitting with you guys. Don't know what happened to it, so I just thought I'd bring it up. Thank you.
Hello. Ken Kent, elementary teacher at Kimball. Good to see you all again. Glad to have you back in person. Couple of things, couple real quick things. I know- I know that we've stopped taking online submissions for public comment, I believe, and I hope that you would reconsider that. I know that getting here, as we can see, is quite a challenge. And if we have access to community voice for the people who maybe can't make it here on time, it opens up the democratic process. Other part I wanted to kind of put out there was hearing buzz about reading interventions in Antioch. Why are students struggling to be at grade level? And there's a few very simple things we can do about that. The reasons we are struggling in some cases are not any different than the struggles going around the country in general. I don't believe we need to fund a study for that, but we do need to bring back libraries and library texts. It's been years, and since the moment those positions were cut, we should have been thinking and pushing diligently to reinstate those positions and give students access to books to develop a joy of learning. Smaller class size is always a bonus. Also wanted to make sure that we could look at possibly a consistent district funding for interventions. In the past, various sites we've been at, we've had to decide, do we hire an intervention or do we do these other programs? For a couple of years there at different sites, we had an upper and lower-grade elementary reading intervention specialist. We had an upper and lower-grade math intervention specialist, and we had a consistent program that was making a difference. And now, our intervention teacher was a reassigned computer teacher. So we're not teaching the computers, they're not access, they're not learning programs, they're not learning online literacy. It's like a give and take. Why do we have to drop one program to pull in something else? I know I just, the current pod that I gave our intervention teacher for my classroom was three students. Many more than three students could benefit from intervention, especially with a year off being feeling like it had truly been a year off. Nine of my 26 students tested initially at kindergarten first reading level. And maybe that was just because they didn't do anything for a year. But I think it's deeper part to it, and I hope that you'll...
I have no more speaker cards, so we move to section five, district reports. A, proposed survey for possible future bond measure. Jessica?
Yes, a few board meetings ago, the board expressed some interest in looking at a facility bond moving forward. They expressed interest in a survey of the voters to assist in framing the opinions of the district voters related to the feasibility of a bond. This evening, I have Jessica Polsky Sanchez from EMC Research, who's going to talk to us a little bit about things that we would put into a survey, get some direction, and then I would be back to the board with the recommendation at a future meeting.
Thank you so much. Is it working? Can you hear me? Are you okay? Okay. Thank you so much for having me tonight. I just wanted to talk through a quick slide deck presentation of some options for research.
Can you look the mic a little closer?
Sure. Research among voters in Antioch Unified School District. So moving on to the next slide. Just some quick notes on who we are. My name is Jessica Polsky Sanchez. I'm a principal at EMC Research. I've been working with EMC for almost 15 years now. The firm does have a history of working with school districts throughout California, leading up to successful revenue measures. And a few other notes here that you can read at your leisure in terms of who we are at EMC. Moving on to the next slide. Whoops. Couple back. Wonderful, this one. There we go. Looking at what you can do with research. So good research can help you answer strategic questions, such as, how do voters think about the quality of local schools? What is their awareness of district needs? What might be the appropriate amount, structure, and timing for a potential measure? What is the level of support for a measure within the two SFIDs compared to district-wide? What is the likelihood of success of a measure? So what is the feasibility of placing a measure on the ballot? What are the types of projects that are most important for those who vote? The themes and messages that just convey the need for a measure, as well as what are some suggested areas for public education and community outreach? So on the next slide, you can see here some proposed methodology. And this is probably the primary question before you tonight. We have proposed for the district a survey using a multimodal methodology, which means we would include live interviews on telephones, both landlines and cellphones, along with online interviews reaching voters by email and/or text invitation. So we have provided a couple of options from 400 to 600 interviews, depending on the approach. We imagine that a 15 to 18-minute length would be necessary. We would provide options to complete the survey in English and Spanish, both online and with live interviewing. And we do have the ability to offer additional languages as needed. So on this slide, you can see a table showing you approximate percentages of the two SFIDs. So we understand there's an interest in a bond to fund projects within SFID number two, and there are also some needs district-wide. So you can see the portion of voters in each of the SFIDs, and then the number of interviews that we would have in the survey within each of the SFIDs, if we did 600 interviews overall, and if we did 400 interviews overall. And so on the next slide, I'll show you what it kind of means to have these different numbers of interviews. This is a chart showing this number of interviews and then the corresponding margin of error, so sampling error. So when we're looking at the results, we are looking at accuracy or reliability within a margin of error of plus or minus. So the margin of error for an overall sample at 400 is 4.9 percentage points, and the margin of error for an overall sample size of 600 is four percentage points. So there's not a big difference overall. But when you divide it up into the two SFIDs, you can see how it makes a bigger difference to have a larger overall sample size. So I'm happy to answer questions about that. There are probably a few questions, but really, just wanted to give you an overview of what is the polling process. So what we would do if we were to work with the district on a survey of voters is we would talk to you, hear about your goals, put it together into a survey instrument draft to review with the district designated team from the district and a consultant team as needed. We would implement the methodology that we talked about, conduct the survey, analyze the results, come back to you with the findings and recommendations, and then we remain available to assist with consultation on the application of the survey results until the board decides whether or not to place a measure on the ballot. So with that, I would like to open it up for any questions you might have.
And I would like to add in as well, one of the things that I'm looking for this evening is to get some direction, in particular, that the board is interested in going forward with the survey to poll the voters and see what they're thinking. I think that's always a good idea. I do like the idea of the 600, because I think the more we hear from, the better. And also, it gives us an opportunity to educate while we're doing that as well. And then finally, the big issue that we'll come back to you based on the survey does have to do with SFID 1 and 2, which was started many years ago. But I think for polling purposes, it might be a good idea to go out for all and at least hear from both sides before the board makes a final decision on how to move forward with the bond.
President Hack?
Go ahead.
Okay. So I have just like a mix of kind of some comments and questions. So I think for starters, I'm very interested in the board pursuing this survey and this poll. I also would agree with you, Associate Superintendent, that 600 would probably be better. I actually would even think that, because it's my opinion that this will obviously inform the bond process and kind of what bond we go out for, if any, at this time. But I also think that we just haven't had a, you know, quantitatively sound survey like this in a while. And I could see this being folded into the LCAP specifically in a really positive way that can help benefit and inform, I think, this board moving forward for at least a couple of years. And so my opinion with this is just bigger is better with this. And I know that with each extra survey, each extra interview, it's exponentially more expensive. But I think that if this is done right, then it could be really beneficial to us in the long run. The only question I have is I didn't see anything in here from our presenter in the methodology about any controls. So I'm just wondering, you know, in this survey methodology, are we going to be trying to ensure that this is, you know, the representative sample? So if we have, you know, 14% of our community as being African-American families, are we going to ensure that 14% of the survey results that we get, you know, would be around, would be representative? So what kind of controls are in place? Yes, that's absolutely our approach. The goal is to gather a sample that is geographically and demographically representative of likely November 2022 voters within the district, understanding that November might be a potential date for a bond measure. So indeed, we know a number of different characteristics of those likely voters based on information available from the voter file. And we watch carefully as we conduct the interviews to make sure our sample is representative. And then we have a number of techniques that we can use to ensure that, you know, throughout the fielding period as well as afterwards. And then this, I mean, that even more so, I think, underscores that this is a perfect time to do this because there are so many more voters than there were, you know, even four years ago who are registered. So I think bigger is better with this. I think we should kind of shoot, that's just my opinion. Shoot for the stars.
Yeah, no, I think, as I speak very loudly, right? So I think I would second what Trustee Householder said. I think that a survey would be ideal, but I did have a quick question. So I noticed that survey and interview were used interchangeably. So am I right in understanding that the survey would be sent out initially? That would then shape what questions and what information we will pursue in sort of those structured interviews or whatever that interview process would look like? Is that the process, or is it something different?
We do sort of refer to them interchangeably. The survey as a whole...
I can't.
Oh, sorry. We refer to the interviews as the people that we talk to as a part of the survey process. So the mixed mode methodology incorporates interviews that are conducted online as well as live with telephone interviewers. And we put all of the results from the survey instrument together. So anyone that we talk to, whether it's 400 or 600 voters, each one is an individual interview following a script that we developed in collaboration with the district that provides us with survey results that we then bring back to you. So it sounds like it's mixed, that, right?
I was going to say mixed methods approach, yeah?
Yes, mixed methodology.
Okay. I have a bunch of more technical questions that I'll sort of reserve for a later day, but I think that it would be worthwhile. Anytime we can get understanding of what the community needs and language in which they present to us. I think that those two things are vital and can shape how we move forward as a district, so. I think it's...
I just have the question about, are you going to also, in a sense, because we have two, I mean, we have some bond issues. One bond issue is still out there, and the older section of town are still paying for it. And I wonder how they feel hearing one more. And then we have the other newer section of town that are not paying anything, because they're already caught, finished with their melrose. Are you going to phrase it so that we can understand if they would go for another bond in the older section? And what is it that tricks them into thinking they would like to have it? Is it buildings? Is it, you know, what is it that they would be willing to pay for a third bond or a second bond? I can't remember which it is in the phrasing. See, I'm just concerned. And also, I need to know, what are the bond issues that are coming forward? Are you aware of what the state might be doing, what the county might be doing? Or is that something separate that we have to look into?
That would be the other expert that I had brought, or consultant that I had brought before, that I can get that information to you more updated. But yes, part of the reason that we would do this, Trustee Rocha, is to see from both sides of town what the appetite is for a bond measure and what they would like to see included in the bond if they're going to support it. So that's part of the reason we're bringing forward the survey in general.
Thank you. I appreciate it.
Yeah, just one quick question. You have on here then sampling error chart. And what particular, like, is the error? What is the sampling error that we're looking at here? Is it the error of the participants that we getting for the survey? Or we talk about like the error of that the responses are not representative of the actual population that we're studying?
So that sampling error is another way of saying the margin of error, which refers to the plus or minus on the survey results. So for a sample of 600, for example, overall, that carries a margin of error of four percentage points. So when we bring you the results and we say, for example, 50% rate the quality of local schools as excellent or good. Let's just, I pulled that number out of nowhere. But if we said that, then it would be somewhere between 54 and 46, right? So we know there's a margin of error of plus or minus four percentage points on the results. And that's based on the sample size.
Got it. And then in terms of methodology, I guess I'm also, and this might be a question for later. I'm wondering, what are the ways that the survey getting, or that they're getting out to people and that we're ensuring that either they were getting more responses from people who either haven't historically been able to respond? And also thinking about whether the responses that we're getting are starting to bias themselves by being congregated in one specific area of town or something like that?
Right. So the list that we use to reach people is a list of registered voters in the district. So when we're looking at the feasibility of a measure that would be voted on by local voters, what we want to look at is the opinions of those voters. And we do have a comprehensive list of everyone who's registered to vote, as well as some demographic characteristics, where they live, all of that information. So that's why we monitor closely for representativeness, and we make sure that we're not over-representing, for example, one part of the district over another. And if that happens, we take measures to correct it.
Got it. Okay, thank you.
And just one last quick thing. So knowing as well that the sampling error is the margin of error, I still, I just want to reemphasize. I think the more, I would honestly want to go over 600 preferably, just to get that margin lower, just because we lost that last bond by, it was too close. And so the more accurate of a feel that we can get, I think it's going to be better for us. Like, just one person.
Any further questions? Jessica, are you comfortable going forward?
I believe I have enough direction, and thank you very much.
Thank you.
And let's go forward to five B. 21, 22, 2021, 2022. Local control accountability, LCAP, mid-year update. Christine?
Good evening. So new this year, districts are required to present an LCAP mid-year report to their board. And so Mr. Cannon and I will be sharing, will be presenting this information this evening. So on our first slide, I'm going to turn it over to Mr. Cannon. He's going to start by sharing some of the background information on this requirement for the mid-year report.
Good evening, board. Is it working now?
Yes.
Fantastic. So AB 130, as you can see on this slide, requires district staff to present a mid-year LCAP report to the Board of Education on or before February 28. So this is our day tonight. The report includes a supplemental for the annual update. To the current LCAP, it includes our mid-year outcome data and our expenditure data. So the supplement is a document that explains the process that the staff use, district staff use to expend the additional funding. We receive... funding we received after the budget was adopted in June. So based on June, we had our June aboard adopted budget, and then additional money through the Budget Act through federal government all came in. So this is just part of a process of keeping up with transparency. Our mid-year outcome data in this report refers to the progress made to date on the metrics listed in our current 21, 22 LCAP. And expenditure data is the amount of spending based on our spending through December of 2021. So we use that as our stopping point for mid-year. As this report is a report, there is no action by the Board tonight, but the Board will review these documents again in the greater package of the 22, 23 LCAP that will come to you in June. So you will approve this in a manner, but you won't do that So the adopted budget in June, like we discussed, included all our known revenue sources at the time and planned expenditures. So the chart in front of you is a viewpoint of what we presented for the budget overview for parents. If you remember, that document is a one, two-page document that was meant to summarize what we do as the district with our budget for our parents. So what you're going to see in front of you today is a comparison of what we presented in June and then what we presented in the first interim report that you saw in December. And you're going to notice a trend here. You've already seen everything we're showing you in one way, shape, or form already, but this is the formalized way of consolidating all of it together. So if you look at here, you're going to find that the total projected revenue increase was of $36 million. So that's on the bottom right there. So your total projected revenue increased $36 million. Of that, our additional concentration funding accounted for $3.3 million. That's the second line there. There's an asterisk on that second line. We called out that information, but the $32 million from June, the 35.7 for the first interim, and the 3.3 difference, it's already wrapped into the first line, the LCFF funds. But we called it out specifically just so you could see that line there. The $11.8 million in other state funds are linked to our Educator Effectiveness block grant, and you've already seen that in the fall, what our plans are for using it. The special education funding and also our expanded learning opportunities program that we're working through now. And you'll see a more detailed plan come forward in the spring. The federal funds of $20 million are a reflection of our ESR earned revenues to date. If you look all the way to the bottom right, you're going to see that $12.4 million of the additional funding is earmarked for spending in this fiscal year. So we increased our total revenue by $36 million. We're increasing our projected expenditures by 12.4. And remember, this isn't an actual, this is a budget. So this is what we're thinking of, what we're going to spend during this year. The additional one-time funds will be utilized over the next course of one to three years, depending on the, the timeframe in which we have to spend down these one-time funds. And they're going to be used to maximize the benefit of keeping additional teaching and also support staff. So the annual, the update to the supplement to the annual update is a document that you have either, if you're looking on Board Docs online, or possibly if you have it in your packet in front of you. There is a document created by the state for school districts to complete. There are five prompts that are listed on it. And we're going to go through each of those five prompts, give you a highlight of what we entered in there. The exact information and narrative that we provided is in that supplemental document. Prompt number one asks how we Antioch Unified School District included our community in planning for the use of additional state funds allocated in the Budget Act of 2021. In a couple more slides, we're going to look at prompt number three, which asks a very similar question, but ask us to do so for federal funds. What we did as a staff is just to be more efficient with our, our families and not have separate meetings. We consolidated that all into one. And so we included our parent community, our, our school staff, our students, and our parents altogether into this So for this first part, we utilized a two-pronged approach. Firstly, we created a survey, and you've seen those surveys results. That was done back in, I think, September. The survey results were brought here. Ms. Hubara shared that information, and we talked about how we included parents. So again, getting back to that theme, that we've done a lot of this work, now it's about consolidating it into this document. So the results of that survey were shared with you as we talked about. The LCAP advisory, parent advisory committee, our district English language advisory committee, and our foster youth advisory all participated in that. The survey results were consolidated into categories and grouped. The advisor groups gave additional feedback on what they thought were priority needs for the district. And then those plans were submitted in October to the Board for the use of the funding. And it is a, a monumental task to try to engage as many parents as we do. So it is a reflection of the efforts of our staff to make sure that we do include them and that we hear their voices, and then we put together plans that meet the needs of our kids. Prompt number two asks the LEA how additional concentration funds will be used to increase staff at schools with greater than a 55% unduplicated pupil percentage. Otherwise, I'll use as UPP, just for short. So these additional funds were made through the California Budget Surplus. The governor and the legislature decided to use those to prop up our concentration grant. So we'll see that we received over $3 million additional in our concentration grant funding. So as all of our 55, or all of our schools in the district have a UPP higher than 55%, that means they're all going to be benefiting from the use of these funds. And again, those funds are to increase staffing to be able to support students, especially for those that are dealing with learning loss. Some of that increased staffing include additional math, English language arts teachers, special education, and reading intervention teachers. Additionally, each school is developing a wellness room with support staff. So as I explained in prompt number one, we kind of did the same thing for prompt one and three. So for here, again, we made sure that we involved all of our different advisory groups to ensure that we sought and sought after voice, and then collected and put those voices within our plan. Prompt number four is going to kind of focus on some of those successes and challenge that we faced as we're going through all of these pieces. And I think right now, and I think most people would join me in, in thinking this way, our greatest success has been reopening our schools and allowing kids to come back in. And with that success is also, I think we had a, a traumatic or dramatic period, this last two months almost. When our kids and our staff came back from winter break, we went through a whole process of dealing with COVID outbreak. And the fact that we were able to remain open, that we are able to provide for the safety of our kids and our staff, I think is a great success. And it owes a lot to some of the programs that we're doing here. You know, just providing the protection equipment that we needed, our professional development, working through our facilities improvement, providing mental health services for our staff and our students, were all very valuable and used remarkably well to make sure that we kept going. Prompt number five asks us to describe how the LEA is using its fiscal resources in this year and how it's aligned to our plans, specifically our LCAP plan. So when we went through and looked at all of this information about what parents wanted, students and staff, we were very careful to align it to our current LCAP goal, all of our LCAP goals. And so what we've done is, as we spend this money, we are, we are monitoring it through our Munis financial software, and we're able to provide reports to our school site, to our district staff, and be able to make sure that our spending is aligned to what we said we're going to do in each of those plans, and to be able to track it through LCAP. So I'm going to transfer this back to Ms. Hubara. She's going to go over the metrics updates. And then after she's done with metrics, we're going to go into the expenditure plan, and then we'll close out and take questions.
Thank you, Mr. Cannon. So as you recall, our LCAP has four goals. And in those goals, there's metrics associated with each of them. And so what I will be sharing this evening is some of the data on the metrics that we do have available at this point in the school year. So starting with Goal One, focused on student achievement, we will be planning this spring to resume the CASP test, which will be for all third through eighth grade students as well as 11th grade students. But what we do have is the metric from last year with our 11th graders from 2021, spring of 2021. And what you can see there is, at that time, we had 55.01% of our students met or exceeded the ELA standard for English, and then 28.85% met or exceeded the standard in math. If you can recall, since we did not administer the CASP for our kid, our third through eighth graders, we utilized, with permission from the state, our iReady data. And this is our spring data from 2021, which shows us where our students placed on a tiered system, with the tier one being on at grade level. So if you see on the chart there for math, we had 27% at grade level, 35% were one grade below, and 38% were two or more grades. So moving over to reading, there again, we have 37% at grade level, 26% one year below, and 37% two or more grades below. On our English learner reclassification, we are pleased to say that we exceeded the county and state numbers with a reclassification of 306 students or 9.4% in the 2021 So Goal Two is focused on school connectedness. And so we have attendance and chronic absenteeism. We have experienced this year so far, a decline, well, actually, this is from last year, sorry, 20, no, I'm sorry, that is this year, up to December, I believe, a decline somewhat in our overall student attendance, as well as our students with disability, as well as an increase in chronic absenteeism. And we, we know we are experiencing across all of our schools as we expect our students to stay home when they're not feeling well this year, as well as students that have been quarantined or have had COVID. And so that's attributing to some of those increases in absenteeism. Also in Goal Two is where we will see some discipline data. And so these dates, again, are from as of December 2021. And so you can see the suspension rates on the left and what those percentages look like. You can also see amongst the different subgroups and how they fare out. And then expulsion, understanding that last year, when we did not have school in person, we had no expulsions. And this year, we are seeing a slight increase in percentage of expulsions. And that's broken out for you by school and then African American student and Hispanic students. Goal Three is focused on college and career readiness. And so you hear, you can see through the center line where it says graduation cohort, that's how many students graduated. And then from there, you can see the percentage of career technical education completers and A to G completers. And then a combination of those two. And those are what helps to make up the college and career indicator that you also will see on the California dashboard. Goal Four is focused on 21st century, century learning environments. We now have a student laptop ratio of 1.2 to one student. That is an increase, the increase from 5,000 laptops that we had in 2020 to more than 13,000 today, with still more on the way. We are researching what technology can be purchased to facilitate more group collaboration and learning at all schools. And part of that effort is being geared towards smart boards. And so we have invested quite a number of these boards. They're like massive touchscreens, and they're like a big iPad that you can manipulate. We can, and just today, in one of our meetings at the district office, we are now using them to conduct hybrid meetings. So we can have people in person, and then we have people that can't be there in person that can join us from another location virtually. And so we are starting to use this technology and demonstrate that for other schools so that they can see how they're used and get excited. Teachers are starting to bring them into their classrooms and explore them. And we're very excited about what the potential, thinking of just something simple, like a field trip, being able to, you know, beam in a guest speaker from afar that doesn't have to necessarily come in and purchase, in person, but can share their wisdom and expertise from the field that they work in from afar.
So next up in the presentation are the expenditure tables. And in Board Docs, you have a very lengthy document that we produce out of, out of a program that we use called DTS, in that we have almost the entire LCAP in there. And it also describes and shows each of the metrics that you've heard already. And it will show the figures that we are, are projecting on the screen this evening. So Goal One, and you've already seen a little bit about the metrics, is about student achievement. And our aim is to reduce the achievement gap for high-need students and ensure all students are accessing learning at the highest levels. In Goal One, we have over 16 strategies or actions that we've listed here, and they make up a quite sizable part of our LCAP, both in the narrative and also in the budget. So I'm going to give you some highlights of each of these goals expenditures. I won't be able to give you all of them, but I'm going to give you some of the highlights. Right now, we support over 125 new teachers in the induction program with academic training. And we assign all of the people, all of those teachers in that program, a mentor teacher to support them and provide lots of professional development. We adopted new elementary science books this year, also secondary math, and we were able to give all of the Thomas Gaines students books and materials. That was a new cost for us. And so that ate up a quite sizable budget or a part of our curriculum budget. There are an increased number of elementary reading specialists at each elementary campus, and our contract with iReady was renewed for another three years. And that's going to support math and reading supplemental education for K through eight. The next part of Goal One, you're going to see our dual immersion program was extended, extended to grades, or to fourth grade at both Fremont and Mura Elementary. Also, additional math and ELA teachers were hired to support secondary instructions at the high schools and the middle schools. We were able to offer a summer, summer credit recovery program and elementary and middle school enrichment programs last year. And we are currently working on the programming for this summer to hopefully increase the amount of offerings we do for each of those grade levels. The special education program is benefiting from having behaviorists, case managers, program specialists, psychologists, and other support staff to meet the program needs of each of our students. And school sites are utilizing their funding through the SPSA, also shown in 1.0 on the chart there. In total, Goal One has a budget of nearly $33 million and expenditures of $15.6 million at this midway mark. Goal Two refers to school connectedness. Antioch Unified has determined to foster student, family, and staff connectedness to school to enhance overall learning experience for all students. So for this, we have a total budget of $13 million, and mid-year spending is at $5 million. In this goal, we have our African American Student Achievement Initiative, vice principals' music, our site safety and other safety contracts and services, counseling, translators, foster and homeless youth services, and a brand-new EL newcomer center. Excuse me, to, to support all of our, our new English language learners who are coming into the country who need those additional Goal Three reflects our efforts to increase college and career readiness. Antioch Unified will prepare our students to be college and career-ready, starting in the elementary grades through high school. The total budget for here is $2.6 million, and we've spent 1.5 to date. The LCAP funds the advanced placement courses, our career technical education courses at each of our high schools, and also education courses at each of our high schools, and also supports the project-based learning program at Black Diamond Middle School. We have eight schools that currently participate actively in our Avid program, and we've went a little bit extra in our blended learning strategy, and that's where we purchased numerous licenses for Read 180, which is a reading supplement program for our middle schools. And so far, that's working really well. We just began that in January, and so we're hoping to see results as we get to the end of the year and look at how we're going to utilize that in the fall. In Goal Four, we pride ourselves on trying to create 21st century learning environments and ensuring that students and staff have increased access to that learning environment for the 21st century. Our total budget here is $3.4 million, and spending is a little over $2 million. Deferred maintenance has already been used this year to help reservice play area facilities, so our block tops, our parking lots for parents and students drop off and pickup, and there'll be additional things that we're going to do with that money as we go through the rest of this year. Laptops were purchased with the intent of a one-to-one ratio, and as you see from our metric, we're getting very close to that one-to-one figure. And additional staff supports those new technology upgrades. So the increase of laptops alone has required us to have additional staffing in the tech department to be able to fix machines and to be able to support not only students but our staff in using those devices. Overall, you're going to see in this slide in front of you the summary of what each of these goals, in terms of the budget and also of the mid-year spending report, we are sitting at about 47% used of our LCAP funds. And to remind you, our LCAP is more than just our supplemental and concentration funds. It includes other federal funds like our Title I, Title II, Title III. It also has our Expanded Learning Opportunities Grant and other funds in it. So when you look at that $51.8 million, that is more than our S and C grant's worth of approximately $35, $36 million. So we do infuse a lot of money into our LCAP, not just our supplemental and concentration funds. We mentioned this at the opening, but looking ahead to June, you are going to see pieces of what you've saw tonight are going to be included in the preparation for our 22-23 LCAP. So this slide is going to show you what is going to be contained in that June presentation. We will have a new budget overview for parents. We will include the supplemental to the annual update, which you've seen tonight. We'll have the new 22-23 LCAP, and within that LCAP, you're going to see action tables and the instructions. So all of that will be put into a nice tidy package and presented late May, early June, depending on how we organize things and get on the board agenda.
So this has proved to be another year with some unique challenges, but the implementation of our LCAP goals remain aligned to our current needs, and we thank all of our employees, our students, parents, and the board for the hard work and keeping students at the center of all work. So if you have any questions for us.
Mr. Chair? Mr. Chair?
Oh, Mary can go, and then I can go after.
No, I just.
Mary first.
I want to thank you. That was very clear and very understanding, and I like the idea when you give us the examples of what you use the money for, and I'd be happy to see more of that. But I was asking, I know there must be a reason, on mid-year expenditure table, you haven't reached that, you haven't used the 2,000 on the biliteracy or the El Puente. Was that because it's not yet in the decision of how to use it?
The seal of biliteracy, we do late in the spring, so once we go through the transcripts of the students and they have met all that criteria, then we use those funds to pay for the extra insignia. I think we do seals that go on the diploma and all that.
Diploma, okay.
And then Puente, Puente, we intended to do this year, but we were not able to launch that. We had an issue. The counselor who was at Antioch High School, who was with the program, left, and so we just weren't able to facilitate that, and it does take a lot of collaboration with, I think UC Berkeley or is it UC Davis?
I think it's Berkeley.
I think it's Berkeley, to be able to do that. So there's a contract, there's a piece, there's some learning in there.
So that's not in place right now, but it's in the future that you might be back into it.
Yeah, we are looking at plans for how to support Antioch High School in reinvigorating what that program looks like into next year.
I just want to say that to the board that I was happy to be part of the process, and I enjoyed the way you've presented it, as you put the two together, and it's more participation for everybody and understanding. But it is hard for a person to understand when you're not involved in all the particulars, as you said. So for me, understanding of where you're spending the money is helpful. Thank you.
So I have a couple specific questions and then some comments. So kind of piggybacking off of what Trustee Rocha was asking about the specifics of some of these mid-year expenditures. So I'm curious, I think it's on, so LCAP Goal One, multi-tiered systems of support. And I'm just curious what this looks like and how it's kind of, like, how do you differentiate what's coming out of multi-systems tiered support? Like, what kind of expenditures is that compared to like, you know, technically, class size reduction is a part of a tiered support system, right? So I'm just curious specifics of the MTSS expenditures, and there hasn't been much. It's $11,000, I think. And it's okay, if you don't have an answer now, I could kind of circle back.
No, and I think Christine, when I give out this, she'll probably be able to jump in a little bit. So we began a process through health resiliency schools and looking at Marzano research and starting to work through what that would look like in developing an MTSS approach to both staff wellness and also student wellness and what it looks like there. As we got through the pandemic and dealing with our administrative staff and other staff essentially being COVID test case handlers, we found that we just weren't able to like get as deeply into that work as we wanted to. Additionally, with that, we found other forms of funding that was more restrictive. For example, our CSI funding, we used a lot of that for the contracted services to be able to provide the training for this. So the money you see here was used in different ways, and we haven't necessarily tracked it with this. The other part is about, we were putting in extra hours for support staff to do this work, and we've just found that we haven't been able to utilize it because when you find, as much as our staff has been doing period substitutions and other work, we're not able to do as much after school because of the fatigue that's just set in amongst our staff.
So then, you know, it would be fair to say that the MTSS, this is kind of our Marzano probably expenditure to date, looking at the research, kind of giving us that specific roadmap. But I guess like a nuance that I hope folks who are listening understand is that, you know, just because there's $11,000 in MTSS, that there are other, there's nuance to it where, you know, there are other kind of expenditures being made that would technically fit into that category, but.
Yeah, the special education budget, for example, is a great example of that, and you see that we budgeted, I believe, $5.6 million in for that, and much of the work that they do is a part of the process of MTSS. And we're still working through what that looks like when a student is struggling for some reason, when we go through the process of meeting as a staff with their parents to discover what's going on through a whole sequence of processes where we do study teams onto eventually referrals if necessary for special education. So in that kind of earmarks a lot of what you see in the LCAP, there is a lot of crossover in what occurs here. Different goals might have more specificity to it, but they all blend together into MTSS. And I think, and Christine can probably speak to it even better, that we're finding a way that how do we blend this together, because MTSS is such a larger umbrella that kind of fits over these topics, and right now, we haven't, because MTSS is the first time we've put it in the LCAP, we still haven't, we've got work to do in figuring out how it flows throughout the document so that you as a board and our parent community understand what those efforts are going to be.
Thank you for explaining that nuance. And then two more questions on just more specific expenditures. So 2.0 as an Igloo is healing and resiliency-centered schools. I'm curious what the kind of thought is behind that. We haven't spent any money in that. Specifically, I'm asking because I have an item later about grief and trauma resources, and just based on title alone, it seems like it could potentially fit into this, but what are some of the thoughts around what we're going to spend those funds on?
The healing and resiliency-centered schools, there are, there have been some invoices, but I don't think that they have been submitted prior to the December pool of the information. I know that I've signed off on a few since then, so I think it will show up next time.
And what contracts or what program?
That is, this is also in part, it's the Wellness Wheel. So in with Marzano, we have a couple of initiatives going, and the Wellness Wheel is the one that falls under the healing and resiliency-centered schools.
Okay, that makes sense. And then last one, and last specific question, then I have some comments, is 3H, college and career supports. Again, this is just one of those ones where, you know, when you see it, it looks like we're not spending a lot. Obviously, there's a lot of nuance. I think as Mr. Cannon said, you know, still going to work out how these things flow throughout the LCAP, more forced to compartmentalize even when the world isn't compartmentalized. But can you give me just an example of what some of this stuff is for that? Is that like the U Can College Fair? What are some of those expenditures for college and career supports?
So first and foremost, it's around the career center technicians. And so there's a full-time career center technician at Antioch High School, and we fund half of a career center technician for Deer Valley out of this. And I think there was other things that went into that decision-making process that Ms. Romeo can probably speak of.
Yeah, and when you look at the mid-year, it's because they work all year. So this is, when you take their salary all the way out, it will be in addition. Deer Valley did have made a decision to have more in their library, so they chose to do things a little bit different, which we allow the schools to do when, you know, they're all a little bit unique. So that money will, the majority of it, will be spent by the end of the year.
Yeah, and just so you all, the staff knows, I'm not concerned about, because I mean, we're at 47%. That almost feels like perfect halfway point. I'm just more so for the public and my own knowledge, kind of understanding what expenditures fall under here, because I know that there's decisions that have to be made with that. And so some of my comments that I have is, you know, I think the thing that has just stuck out to me with this, I, first, I appreciate all the work that has gone into this. Everybody knows, and if you don't know, LCAP is, I'm very much a nerd for LCAP, but I will be very honest in saying that I am extremely disappointed in these outcome numbers. I think that we have, for at least in my time on this board, we have been doing right by our English learner students. Every time I see the data come out for them, it seems like we're either, we're right at the state where the state's at or better. So I always have appreciated that and kind of just want to uplift that as, you know, a potential model. I know that parent engagement for that community has been crucial, so want to uplift that. But, you know, when I'm looking at Goal One, student achievement, I mean, it's horrendous. I mean, there's really no other way to say it. 45% of our students are not meeting standards for English. 70% are not meeting math standards. And then when you look at iReady, which makes me really nervous, and I'm not sure what this is, maybe something to look into or if there's some context, but we're doing worse on the iReady numbers. It says 63% of our students aren't at grade level for reading, and I find that hard to believe, because if you have 45 that are reading at grade level and then 63. So I know iReady was really going to be something pre-pandemic that was going to help kind of catapult some of these tiered interventions. Obviously, the pandemic put everything, the world, on pause. But when I'm looking at these iReady results now, I'm wondering, you know, are students not taking the tests seriously? Do parents understand the importance of these tests? How does chronic absentee fit into this? And so, you know, I would, that's, I guess, a kind of a comment and a question, maybe for our May kind of LCAP discussion, is what's going on with iReady? Why are the iReady results worse? And then I would also like to see, and I say this every time, and I'm sure that my board is going to agree, more disaggregated data. You know, when we look at chronic absenteeism, 32.3% of our African-American students are experiencing chronic absenteeism. When we look at the proportional, kind of their proportion in our community versus the amount that they're not coming to school, it seems way worse than pre-pandemic. And so, you know, I don't, I don't mean to be a pessimist, but I do have to just speak truth to power in saying that these outcomes are not great, and it's the same numbers that we've seen, at least in my time on the board, not really much of a difference. And then the last thing, kind of a question, kind of more of a request, if the board would agree, is that next time we see this, these numbers, I would like to see it over five years. Like, I want to get a good sense of, okay, two years before the pandemic, the pandemic year, which we know is kind of a wash, but let's pull in those grades, let's pull in some of the other data that, you know, I think Ms. Abara has worked really hard to try to show student achievement data through other ways. When we didn't have CASP, I would like to see that, and then I would like to see that compared to this, and just to really see in five years, where has the data gone? And then I would like to see the information disaggregate again. Obviously, it's a presentation. You guys have to choose. There's only so much information you could share. But for May specifically, I will be wanting to see, like I said, that five-year information, but then also disaggregated. So what's our elementaries looking like, you know? And then I also just don't want to see just the areas that are doing the worst, like for, you know, chronic absenteeism, we have that African-American students are chronically absent way more, but then what, how is that compared to their white counterparts? And then, you know, I mean, there are a lot of, a lot of other issues. But like I said, I do appreciate the work. I do want to uplift the areas that we're doing good in, but I just have to be honest, students with disabilities, African-American students socially, economically disadvantaged, homeless, and foster youth, again, are all doing the worst, and it, and it's, we need to honor that, just like we praise the district. So that's it.
Thank you for that, trustee householder. So I did have a couple quick clarifying questions. One on page, I believe it's 16. So the percentage of the expulsion rate, is that total population or population of each of those subcategories?
Total population.
Total population, okay.
Yeah, and I got to tell you, it's the way in which the state presents the data and the way in which we modeled it as a metric. It's really hard to look at it as a .06, .17, and, you know, without having more context to it, but it is what we're presenting because it's the mid-year report. So we do have more internal information about how many and what's going on this year.
Yeah, so if possible for the next presentation, I'd like to see those numbers teased out, because if we can see a, you know, representative sample of, I'm sorry, not a representative sample, if we can understand what the total population that are impacted by those expulsion rates and suspension rates, that could really help us in framing, you know, plans moving forward. So next, the second question is on page 15. Am I understanding this correctly that less than 20% of our total population are college and career ready?
Yes.
Approximately?
Yes.
Okay, okay.
I actually think that's college ready. Is that correct, A through G completion?
Yeah, it's the A through G. Are you speaking about A through G?
Well, no, so there's college and career ready, and then there's also CTE. So I'm assuming that some of the 18.4% also bleed into that 4.9%, so I'm guesstimating that it's approximately 20%.
Yeah, so the CTE is about those that complete a two-year sequence of career technical education and also meet the A through G. Just want to make sure we're talking about the same thing. Yes, so those together.
But they can be, those aren't necessarily unduplicated.
Correct.
Yeah, so approximately 20%. We can assume that there is some carryover there.
Right.
Yeah, so approximately 20% of our students are college and career ready.
That's correct.
Okay. And then there was one other question. Oh, lastly, so for the Avid participation, you know, Avid is a wonderful program. I know a lot of students that have gone through it. If we could get a little bit more in terms of detail around what those, what the student population or the student, the student population that's in those programs and how that program is sort of relayed to students.
Okay.
Because, you know, within, there's a big difference, there's a big district, there's a number of programs going on, and some of the things that are going on in Avid could actually address some of those, you know, maybe increase those CTE numbers and A through G numbers. So, yeah, so that's, so thank you for the wonderful work. I wanted to end by saying that as well. So, but if we can get more clarity around those questions for the next, for the larger meeting, that'd be great. Thank you.
Yeah, I'd also like to kind of echo that and, yeah, what opportunities are there to stratify the data and kind of compare it to previous years? And some of my thinking behind that resonates with some of the thoughts that were shared, but also things like, we have initiatives on here that we're spending money directly to target some of these groups, and so we need to have. to target some of these groups, and so we need to have outcome data on those groups specifically, so that we're being fiscally responsible with where we're spending money and making sure that, that money that we're spending is leading to better outcomes. And then, yeah, and I think that there's, there's a lot of really great opportunity here to stratify data and really get some good information out there. Because stratification of data at times to many people can seem punitive, but there's a lot of opportunities to highlight really great things that we're doing as well. I mean, just off the top of my head and off data I know, I know that our student achievement data, if we were to compare to previous years at that same grade 11 level, we're actually up there. And if we compare stratify our groups out there, we see improvements there as well. And so stratification of data can sometimes seem scary and seem like a way to highlight ways that we're not succeeding, but it's also a great way to highlight ways that we're doing really great as a district. So I'd just like to kind of underscore that point and, and, yeah, kind of ask, yeah, what, what barriers are there to providing stratified data and maybe comparisons to previous years?
Well, we have lots of information within various data systems, so all the information is there. The barriers are just the time and the direction of what we want to look at and what platform we want to present that information to. Sometimes there's difficulty in just how to organize it. Right now, our, probably our largest difficulty is that the state isn't taking our data that we normally present to them through Calpads and other systems, and then bringing it back to us in form of a dashboard or other tools. So generally speaking, we kind of can be on top of things, but the last couple of years, we've been kind of waiting for data. And so we find ourselves, even as we prepare this report, we're using at times really old data also to make some of these decisions based on what the outside community of education expects from us around math and reading scores. So we're using, you know, second-party type of tools like iReady and others to be able to do that. But we have a lot of data. We can organize it and present it in various different ways to be able to support both the board's understanding and our public's understanding of, of what we're doing to advance the work of student achievement.
Awesome. No, yeah, thank you. And thank you again for all the work that's put into this. You know, I say my comments, not, again, not to be punitive, and understand that as an organization, we were developing and growing, and education as a whole is only at the beginning stages of really adopting a strong data-driven, data-centric way of existing. And so I know that that's one thing that our district is also working on, so that's kind of why I bring up these points. But again, thank you for all the work that's done here. I know that you're being stretched and that there's a lot of moving pieces and things that may, can make that challenging at times, but just want to kind of continue to push on, how can we continue to do better in that aspect? Thank you.
President Hack, is it okay to just ask a quick follow-up?
Of course.
And this is to our superintendent. So it sounds like there are now at least three of us who are wanting disaggregated, stratified data. What supports do you need from us to be able to help staff? Because I mean, I feel like I'm looking at the whole team right now, who's really working on a lot of putting this together. So what supports would you need for us to be able to see, you know, the longitudinal data, to see things stratified? Is it just a matter of time, or is there an initiative or support from us that can help expedite this process for us?
So I think today's, this evening's presentations, my understanding that Ed Services came kind of with the helicopter view. But now that we're hearing what kind of data that you would like, I don't think that's a problem compiling it. We just need a little bit of time to do that. We're always looking at data, so I'm sure that it's not that difficult. I just, I heard pretty loud and clear that you'd like a little bit of a deeper dive, so we can make that happen.
And we can look at how we can do that, because the LCAP is very specific. We already, we've already said what the metrics are, and those are what we have to report on. So these additional pieces, like the five-year trend, that's something that we can provide maybe in another format. I mean, we can still do it publicly, but maybe separately, because it doesn't really fit into the format of the LCAP.
I completely agree. And I'm just more so asking, because I want to make sure that you all have the support, because if we really are gonna take this deeper dive, it's gonna be an undertaking, and it's, it's a lot of work. You know, this isn't something that's, you know, you can just throw together. So I just want to make sure that, you know, you have the support from us as well to be successful in that.
Thank you.
Thank you, President Hack.
Okay, are we done with the LCAP for tonight? Let's move on to number six hearings. We have none. Seven is public presentations. We have none. And number eight is consent items, and we have A through O. Does anyone have a concern or a question on one of those items?
I would make a motion. I'll make a motion to accept the consent calendar as is.
Second.
Second. We have a motion and second. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? It passes. On to section number nine, action items. We have three or four of them. So the first one would be Stephanie, you're gonna talk about post-census trustee area.
We disagree.
Yes, we have this evening, backed by popular demand or not, Mr. Larry Schenke from Atkinson-Andersen Law, Yol, Rude and Roma, and also Scott Newell from Cooperative Strategies.
Evening. Well, we're here tonight to review the same scenarios that we looked at last time and wanted to give you a few additional weeks since our last meeting to just contemplate those maps, solicit any feedback you needed from your community, and then tonight, make a decision on a preferred scenario. And so I believe Larry has drafted a resolution that y'all can take to select a particular scenario, but I also wanted to just be here tonight in case anybody had any closing questions or inquiries that, that you needed from us.
And if I, if you don't mind, if I step in, we do have some results from our, our parent feedback groups, community feedback groups. So the maps were shared, our parent advisory committee, our district English language advisory committee, and our LCAP committee, as well as the service, the survey was posted on our website, which was pushed out to all of our school websites. And then scenario one seemed to be the most popular with 78.5% support. Scenario two had 16.7% support, and scenario 2A had 14.8%. And I, yeah, and I think a variance, as you'll recall, map one has a variance of 8.3%. Map two, 1.8%, and 2A has a variance of 4%. And if you'll recall, we need a variance under 10%, so all three of the maps do meet that criteria.
Superintendent Dallow, just a clarifying question. What was the total number of respondents to that survey?
I don't have that in front of me. I'm so sorry, but I would definitely be happy to provide that.
Thank you for providing that data. I have literally no preference either way, and so because of that, I think we should just go with what the people want, which sounds like area one. But I kind of am more so looking at Vice President Hernandez and President Hack, since your two districts seem to be the ones that are most, I mean, your, your lines are the ones that are moving, it seems.
Yeah, I have a question. I'm wondering with that survey that, that we did, or even during some of these meetings, do we get any kind of qualitative feedback as to what maybe some of the reasoning or thoughts of the preference of map one was among some of these parents?
I will defer to Associate Superintendent Barra.
Say that again, I'm sorry.
Yeah.
Go ahead.
Yeah, no, I'm just wondering if during any of these surveys or any of these meetings, if anyone said anything, or there wasn't any qualitative data as to, you know, some of the thoughts behind why maybe some parents were picking one map or the other in particular, why we saw a higher percentage of people picking map one versus the other one?
Nothing that I recall. Did you recall anything, Ms. Cavalera?
The only one response was from one person who preferred map one because their area would not be affected, and in map two and 2A, they would be moving from one trustee area to another.
I think that was the most common comment that we heard, that a lot of individuals felt like they had chosen in the last election the person they wanted to represent their district, and they wanted to continue with that.
And if I, if I may, it may have the highest variance of the three, but it was the most minimally impacted from the existing process.
If I, Mr. Chair? I remember that we had between one and two, there was, that two was taking more people, it was causing more of a change than one, and one was just a small little area, as you know, with the pink in the, between the two and the green. And that was why one was chosen over two. And 2A is the same thing. Sorry.
No, it's okay. So this, that's G Street, that's like Putnam Park Middle School kind of area, right? Right there in the middle? Because it almost seems like it would make more sense with one keeps that kind of neighborhood more together. And if I'm not, if I'm, I'm trying to visualize that area, and I feel like it's a, you know, splitting it in half seems kind of disruptive. And again, just my opinion.
Are you talking between, are you saying on the one map?
Mm-hmm, so in that, right in the middle area, you know, it's, it's.
It's the balance of the, the green one on the right, which is the other, the largest one, that doesn't have a representative yet. At the time that we decided this, if I remember, they cut this, there was not involvement between area one and, I think that's, what's the green? What number is green? Uh, it's two, area, one and two. So they, they divided because of the income and popularity, and I mean, it wasn't the same, so they did, kept it like that. And as it came down, we ended up, we had to keep this area down here by Davison and cut it there to Putnam, because it had a balance with enough numbers for number, trust, for one, District One. That's my understanding from the past.
I have a question for our team here. In terms of variance, because I know map one has the highest variance, and in terms of how that impacts, you know, redistricting that happens in the future, because I know we have a certain variance that we have to keep it under, regardless of how much that variance changes over the next few years, the next time we have to actively deal with that would be after the 2030 census. Is that correct?
Yes, sir.
I mean, my preference is to pick one of these tonight. This, because the sooner the better with this. Our deadline is in April, so that's just my, my preference.
Do you need a motion at this time, Mr. Chair?
If I might, your deadline is next Tuesday.
Oh, yeah, so it's even sooner.
You are not under the same statute that the counties and cities have.
Okay.
You have a separate statute.
If you need a motion, I will move for the map number one.
I'll second it.
Mr. President, if I might, I would ask that you adopt the resolution with the map as Exhibit A.
At the same time, yes.
And I believe you have, I don't know if you have the rule where the resolution is done by.
We have the resolution here.
Okay, so then I could do a friendly amendment to that motion to include the resolution.
Sure.
Per, can I, we, there was a slight modification of the syntax on the resolution. It's before you. So I would ask that the board make a motion to approve with the revision. I should have pointed that out first.
Okay.
Let me come back to you.
Yes, no, but that's perfect. So.
I accept that.
Yep, my friendly motion is for this revised version to be approved with, along with scenario one.
Mary, you want to?
Yes, I agree. Is that with revision?
So we have a motion for scenario one with revisions in the document. All in favor, say aye.
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 Opposed? It passes.
I, I, but with sort of, not caution, but hesitancy, because in future, when we do these maps, I would like to see a little bit more public involvement and sort of widespread, you know, community input. You know, I think that that could help the process along, and we could also get some of that community voice that trustee Hernandez talked about, maybe have qualitative, a qualitative survey go out to folks, so that way we can understand some of their reasoning behind why they chose a specific area.
Hopefully, next time, when the census is done, it won't be delayed by about six months.
I can hear you.
The census was delayed by six months.
Yeah, there are extenuating circumstances, of course, but, you know, I mean, I, I'll support, but with, you know, with that sort of added, added comment.
Comment going forward.
Comment going forward, there you go.
Okay. Thank you.
Thank you.
Let's move down to B, approved community facilities annexation and lien release agreement. Jessica.
Yes, so the board will recall, some months back, over a period of time, we had been working with a new development who, some of the houses were going both, were split right down the middle between Brentwood and Liberty, and then the Antioch unified district. The board did approve and went through the county board to make a change to the attendance boundaries. So Brentwood and Liberty were completely done, but we have the Melrose that we have to also address. And so this evening, Rob Anslo with Atkinson-Andersen Law Firm is here to talk to the board about what the next steps would be.
Good evening, Mr. President, Madam Superintendent, members of staff in the audience. My name is Robert Anslo. I'm partner with Atkinson-Andersen. Jessica just outlined some of the background. We're specifically dealing with the Park Ridge Development Project and debit on homes. And as you know, over the last year, some of the territory in there went to Brentwood and Liberty, and some of the property came into Antioch. So as part of that, the existing Melrose District, CFD 2004-1, part of that territory went to Liberty and Brentwood, and the territory that came into the district was not included in the community facilities district. The developers requested that it be so. So essentially, we're, this is a process whereby we're aligning the community facilities district with the territory transfer. There are two items before you on this, this area tonight, 9B and 12A. The first is an agreement to deal with the annexation and lien release for the CFD. That's the item that's 9B. And then later on in the agenda, we have action item 12A, which starts the process to annex what I'll call the incoming territory into CFD number 2004-1. And I'd be happy to try and respond to any questions that the board or staff might have.
Any questions?
I don't know, I have questions.
You go.
I was just for clarifying, because again, a lot of this action took place before. I think any of us were on the board in 2004. So the, the section of AUSD that was annexed to Brentwood was under Melrose. So the funding and the funds that were associated with that Melrose, did those also go to Brentwood? Because.
What happened is, is the community facility districts levy a special tax every year.
Mm-hmm.
So when that territory goes to Brentwood and Liberty, those school districts will have the responsibility for mitigating the school facilities. The lien or special taxes will stop. The money previously collected will stay with Antioch, but it just means that our CFD lien won't be collected going forward on that territory. The, the idea is, is that the incoming territory will become, as part of the annexation, subject to the special taxes. I hope that answers your question.
So if I'm understanding you correctly, though, that, those lands that went to Brentwood would no longer be, would no longer adhere to the Melrose, but the new incoming could be subject potentially?
That's, yeah, that's part of the action items we're taking tonight, is exactly what you just said.
So we may then be introducing a new tax to an area that didn't approve it? Is that?
Well, as part of the annexation process, the incoming territory will go through a Melrose proceeding, the first step of which is tonight, and the property owner recognizing that there are no homeowners there. It's strictly owned by the property owner or by the developer, and he wants it to be subject to the Melrose taxes as opposed to having to pay the statutory school fees. And it's beneficial for the school district in the long run, because you get more money for school facilities through the Melrose district than you would through the statutory school fees.
So these, just for public consumption, these aren't necessarily existing homes?
No, there's, there are no homeowners there. This is right now, I think they're in the process of building, but there are no, there are no individual homeowners there in this territory, in either of these territories at this time.
So I'm right in understanding that there, I just want to be, be clear that there will be no new levies, I'm sorry, no new taxes levy against existing homeowners?
Correct.
Okay.
Mr. Chair?
Yes?
I just want to make sure that when we, whatever we do, whatever we do now, is that whatever happens to that open land, and they are, if they become the Meloresses, we agree, that those families are told on a written material that they sign off, because I know what a hardship that is, when you have to battle it later on, when those families find out they're paying the tax.
All of the developers who sell property encumbered by a Melrose district are required by the Department of Real Estate to issue what's called the DRE White Paper. It explains all of the special taxes. It's part of the documents that are put in front of every homebuyer. So, yeah, and they're required to sign off on it, saying that they've read it.
Well, luckily, this time it's one piece of land and not pieces of land that have already been built, because I know in the past, we've had one house selling here saying Melrose, and the other house saying, no, I'm not Melrose.
Well.
And then we had that fight going on in the. going on in the city.
There, there is a dividing line between where the Brentwood, Brentwood Liberty territory is and where the Antioch territories are. In some cases, it runs down the middle of the street because that's where the dividing line was drawn based on the territory transfer. We're just conforming with that.
That's all. As long as the information gets to that family.
And we want to make sure that the public knows that we are, you know, stewarding their funds and their, their finances appropriately, particularly if we're considering going for a bond. You know, I think that's an important conversation that we, that we raise. So-
Again, the developer is required by the DRE requirements to get the, put it in front of the homeowner and say, you understand this. And if you look in your escrow documents, you'll see your, you know, expectation of annual taxes, and that'll appear there.
Correct.
Oh, no. I was just gonna make a motion, but before I did that, I just wanted to say this for the record. I did not support this annexation when it came before the board. I believe I was the only vote, and that was simply because I didn't like cutting the neighborhood in half like that. But I do, now that the majority of the board, we moved forward with that annexation, agreed, I would make a motion to approve this community facilities district annexation and lien release agreement.
Second.
First and second. All in favor say aye.
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 Opposed?
Thank you very much.
And I would also want to make a, a motion to suspend the rules and move item 12A up so that our lawyer, attorney here can leave. Because 12A is the second part of it.
12A is, is, this is the initial resolution to start the annexation process. We will be back to the board on April 13th with the public hearing and election, which will be a walk-in election, very simplified. And I will be back here to assist the board in understanding all of the steps required for the Melrose annexation.
Great. So I made a motion to suspend the rules, move item 12A up.
Second.
And then I'll make another motion to actually approve that. So let's just go through this one first.
Okay. Resolution on 12A.
To move forward.
We would need, I think we need to take a vote on the motion that's on the table, which is to move the item up, and then we'll vote on that.
To move forward, yes. All in favor say aye.
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 Opposed? Okay. So we moved it forward. Now-
I was gonna make a motion to actually approve it, though. So I'm making a motion to adopt resolution 12A. Sorry, it's kind of a two-parter.
Yeah, that's resolution 2021-22-38.
Yes.
Thank you.
Second.
You got a first and a second to actually approve it. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? It's approved. It's moved and approved.
Thank you very much.
So that's done. Now I'll go back to where we were before.
Okay, we're back to-
12C.
C.
C. Services agreement with AMN Healthcare Services Incorporated. Jessica, that was yours.
Yes, this item is in front of the board separately, as it is a new vendor that we are using. We have needed to use some outside vendors for our OT as well as some of the other related services pursuant to students' IEPs. So I would ask the board to approve that this evening.
I'll make a motion to approve services agreement with AMN Healthcare Services Incorporated.
I'll second that. All in favor say aye.
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 Opposed? It passes. To D, services agreement with Corvid, Corvid's connection on behalf of Delshaw.
This is also before the board this evening, because it is a new vendor. It's no cost to the district. And Corvid is going to provide science presentation that's focused on animals in the region and preservation. So I'd ask that the board approve.
I will make the motion.
Motion in a second.
Can I just say that I really want to see whatever report, whatever it is that they produce. I really, really want to see it. That's my only caveat.
Yes.
I support this wholeheartedly.
Thank you for coming. I got a first and a second. All in favor say aye.
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 Opposed? It passes. Onward to the next page. Number 10, items for information discussion, action by the board. Ellie has a trauma and grief resources and response for discussion.
Yeah. So I had put this, I requested this following the last meeting that we had. It's no surprise that our community, really in the past month or two, has experienced a lot of great kind of tragedy. There's been a lot of trauma, very, you know, kind of acute in, in terms of, you know, maybe there's a fight at this school, but then things that impacted the entire community, like, you know, the loss of a student. And so I just really wanted to kind of elevate this and see what the board thinks. My kind of idea for this is rather than sit here as like non-mental health and trauma and grief experts, rather than try to say, let's do this and kind of, you know, take a more Band-Aid approach, what I would like to see would be a working group. And actually, today, the new interim chief of police was just announced. And I actually think it would be a good relationship or a good opportunity to kind of form that relationship. His name's Dr. Steve Ford, and he's the interim chief of police. And then I know that we have really great relationships with Kaiser, I believe John Muir. And so my vision of this would be a working group where two of us from this board, plus, you know, staff and other folks in the community. APD, I would love to be there. And then, you know, any other kind of healthcare providers. And to really, with the intention of coming up with solutions to deal with, you know, trauma and grief as, as it occurs, because, you know, different situations are so, you know, wildly different, especially when it comes to a loss of life. And so I think that we need to have specific, a specific response. So, yeah, that's kind of in a nutshell. I hope to do a working group.
I think that that's a great idea, but I would also encourage us to think about including the county, because they do have, you know, all counties have identified funding and programs and supports for, or just this very thing. And mental health services are, I know Contra Costa has a robust, a robust mental health services catch, so.
So I do want to point out to the board that we have been meeting with the county health, and there is some funding available, but is separate. We're working with SEDAR, Kaiser, and so forth. And that is a different working group-
Yeah.
That we will be working around assessing first and then determining what needs are in Antioch. So there's already a, a committee working on that as well.
And just so-
This is not an action item. It's just discussion.
Yeah, it's just discussion for now, yeah.
And so part of, part of the guiding sort of differentiation, just in the larger scale, is typically the county works with medicale-supported students, where in this case, for AUSD would be students, whereas Kaiser and all of the, you know, John Muir and all those other organizations would be non-medicale students, or private, private phase, what it's called. So.
And, you know, and the way that I see this too, is it's having the board there, having at least one of us there, I think would be really important, just from that kind of policy perspective. Because I do think that there's an eagerness to do more on this board. But, you know, like I said, we're not necessarily grief counseling experts. And also, I think that what's been going on with our students is, I mean, this is just very unique and very hard. And I also want to, like I said, kind of engage, I would love to engage the police department, especially now that we have a new interim chief there who has already said that he wants to engage students. I know that, honestly, the reason this even came into my intention is council member, Tamisha Torres Walker on Antioch City Council, had asked myself and trustee Hernandez what resources were available so that she can kind of disseminate that information. And so I know that there's interest from that perspective as well. And I think that there are a lot of people that, at least in the conversations I've had, that want to help. But from my perspective, as a board member, I'm not even sure how to, I think that kind of constantly bringing up as an information discussion action item, it's just not moving it as quickly as I think it needs to be moved. And if there's a working group that can come together with like a set of recommendations, or maybe the recommendation is that there is none. But at the very least, show the community that us as a board are, are trying to get as much information as we can to support. I mean, I would love to see, what is, what do they call themselves? Wacko, I think it is, the wellness team, as a part of that working group, you know? Like people that are doing the work in our AUSD community, because they're, I mean, they're the ones with the ideas.
Mr. Chair?
Yes?
I would like to hear from our superintendent what her intentions or what the intentions is of the district, and how they're putting it together for the mental health in general. And then what ideas that you have to be able to pick up those people that we already have in our place, such as these hospitals, you know, John Muir and et cetera. Because I know they're all in here, and I'm sure that you have a group already meeting. So we don't know, you know, what the, where you're going with it. So you might even have this already in place, for all I know.
We do have a care team. And part of that care team is also working with our healthcare partners, with county resources. So my hope is not to say there wouldn't be a working, a separate working group, but I would love to first, would share with the board exactly what we are doing. So maybe a district report first and kind of go from there.
We have one in the works, right?
This is a discussion item, and what you're sharing with us is a possible further reflection.
Yeah, sooner rather than later, because I agree with trustee House. Look, this is a timely and-
Yeah. And you, we were, we already have a report in the works, I believe. I think we gave direction on that a while ago. So I know that we will get that information soon. And I think that, you know, I think that that's really going to inform this process. But like I said, I brought this up out of, you know, concerns in the community. I know that we've done a really good job, I think, of addressing things as they come up as a district. But going forward, I mean, I think it's causing, especially for Antioch High School right now, I can't even imagine what it's like to be a staff member there. And so like, I'm thinking of really very, very specific trauma and grief, but I'm very much okay with waiting until the mental health kind of overview comes back to us and then bringing this back up again. I'm also happy if there's anybody on the board right now who just wants to talk with me, kind of, in an informal ad hoc, maybe that could help as well.
Can I ask a clarified question? So I had an opportunity from our last board meeting to now to speak with the wellness, culture, and climate team.
Yeah.
And so we, we, they would love an opportunity to be able to share what we are doing, because they're thinking, they do have a very keen sense of trauma and the impact of trauma. And so where they want to also kind of balance the conversation is, is talking about the things to prevent tragedy from happening. And so that's where we've really invested a lot of time in, in the programs and strategies. And so they want that, they would love that opportunity to be able to share that. And then we can move into then, what do we do when there is crisis? And, and having a crisis response team. So if you're open to that, that's what they're preparing for, and they would love to have.
Oh, I would, I would absolutely love that. I mean, they're the ones who've been on the forefront. And I know that especially after Jonathan Parker, those healing circles were instrumental in, in helping the students and the community. So I would, I would personally want to invite them.
You brought this up for discussion. You have now an opportunity. Does that satisfy your discussion?
Yeah, that does. Is, is, do you-
I have comments.
Okay.
Yeah, no, I think this is a great discussion that we bring up, because as has been said, that trauma is something that we're seeing, that has always been in place here in this community, long before the pandemic, and will continue long after if we don't act. And one of the things that's well-known when it comes to tragic events and grief is that when we don't act, it normalizes these things. And communities feel that this is a normal part of their existence and their way of life. And so I'd urge us to take action faster rather than later, because there's no reason that a work group that looks at our, that systemically looks at what we're doing now can't coexist with the other things that we're doing. There is no such thing as doing too much work when it comes to the mental health of our students here. And committees and work groups and things like that are dynamic. We can change them as we hear presentations, as we get information, because it's going to take work and it's going to take progress to get this committee going, to get this group going, to get the discussions in place, to catch everyone up to speed. And the longer that we take with these things is another day that we're failing our students. There has been a lot of tragedy in this, in this school district. And it's really up to us to show that we're taking action, that we want to do these things, not that we're sitting here waiting and just listening to presentations. We can continue to have these conversations. Again, these things can coexist together. So I think it's, you know, I'd love to go ahead and make a motion for us to go ahead and begin a work group consisting of at least two board members and additional community members.
That is not on the agenda. The agenda is the discussion on the item.
I believe this section says items for information, discussion, action.
But the item didn't come up for a decision?
The description was for discussion by the board. I'm, I'm not arguing with you, and I'm not disagreeing.
I'll second. Mr. Chair?
We have an option that was given to us for some information to go forward. And I, if we approve that, that's the first step in that next direction.
Yeah, no, like I said, I think those things can coexist. We can do that and this.
Mr. Chair, I think I would rather hear from our district. And then I know that the county has its own group of involvement. And that might be somewhere, as you're talking about, that's probably what you're talking about, reaching out and bringing them in part of the school district as well. But I first have to hear what the mental health component's being done, before we can go to the next step, I believe. I don't think we can jump it without knowing what our district is doing.
So there is a motion on the table, and it is under action. And I believe I may have heard a second. So maybe we should, just to be clean, take care of the second, and then if the board wants to have further discussion.
What is the motion?
The motion is to approve a work group consisting of two board members and community members that focuses on a systemic overview of our mental health services in this school district.
And, you know, I think just to kind of piggyback off of trustee, what trustee Hernandez said, I hear what you're saying, trustee Hack and trustee Rocha. And I, I actually agree that we should be getting more information. But with what trustee Hernandez is saying is that if we normalize that what's been going on, even just making, even if this motion gets approved tonight and we get this work group started, it's at least a signal then to the community that this isn't normal and that we are thinking about it. And maybe the two board members, we can be integrated into a working group that already exists. Maybe the working group takes a, you know, a different direction. But, you know, the way I see it is that it, there really is no harm in just saying to the community, we are going to form this group to look specifically at trauma and grief response.
I want to hop in really quickly. So, you know, when I was in high school, my best friend was shot and killed. And there were a number of conversations that happened. You know, there was a one-day grief counselor that came in. Sorry, this is always a tough thing. But there was a one-day grief counselor that came in, and then two weeks later, nothing. So whatever, whatever is decided, whatever conversations we have, if, if it, if it's introduced, make it sustainable. Because if we do something, I mean, I think we can introduce more harm by not having, I'm sorry, by introducing something and then taking it away, or it not being done well, or anything like that. So this is something that's extremely important to me. So if it's done, it has to be done right. So, yeah.
Mr. Chair?
Yes?
I, I can understand the urgency or the need or the ability to be able to tell the community that we are trying to do something, working together for the mental health issues for our students. I, I understand that. I just wanted to make sure that we're not pushing it ahead and that we're putting more efforts, I mean, more into this, the administration to try to pull that together, when they're trying to do their piece and getting that and giving us the information. And now we're going to give them a direction to more before they even get to the point where they want to get to that point. Follow me? I, I might not be saying it right. I just don't want to put that much pressure on them. I'd rather hear from them and then move on. And I don't disagree with the idea of the grouping. I think it's good to have involvement of community and, and agencies that belong in that health field of mental health. But I first would like to hear from the district before I go forward. And if I object to your motion, that is my reason.
So really quick question. Can we, can we clarify what the goal of this ad hoc committee would be? Like what are the intended outcomes, for example?
I mean, I think that maybe, I don't know, in the context of what I was really trying to bring up, I didn't want to put too many parameters on it. I mean, I guess the biggest goal is to just, you know, gather this information and to be able to formulate some type of a program or policy that we can adopt as a board. I mean, ultimately, that's what I'm looking for. What can, what action can we take as a board to support what's already in place? Or maybe we need to, you know, kind of take a different direction? But in terms of like, kind of nailing it down, I would want to, I would want to make sure that whoever's going to be at the- that whoever's going to be at the table has a chance to, to drive those goals as well. And I think that, you know, maybe if this does get approved and it does go forward and a group gets together, you know, we can kind of come back and discuss, you know, periodically in our updates, you know, the direction that that's going so that the entire board will be able to continue to drive the process. But I wouldn't want to get us, I wouldn't want to pigeonhole us too much of what, what exactly we're trying, I guess, I mean, what we're trying to do is create board policy and programs to support our students ongoing and in a sustainable way. Because you're right, one-day grief counseling isn't enough, even having a grief counselor a month later sometimes isn't enough. What happens in a year when you have a panic attack because you heard a firecracker? You know? And so that's really what I'm looking at is, you know, how to, I, I think preventing the trauma as Ms. Abara said, preventing tragedy. But then also, what are, what are we doing, you know, how are we dealing with an elementary school kid versus a high school kid versus the Medi-Cal student versus, you know, the, et cetera, et cetera, et cetera. I think that there's a, really a lot to look at, but.
And this will be different than the committee that's existing, because it will be from a board perspective?
Uh, yeah. I think it'd be from a board and a leadership perspective. And, and like I said earlier, my preference, if he's available, would be to have the chief of, the interim chief of police, whose like doctoral research is in community policing. So I, I mean, it's just a great time, I think, as leaders in this community to get together and.
Mr. Chair.
My thought is, as opposed to taking action on this this evening, Christine had offered to give us some information of what's available in the district, and then we can react to that information and come up with another plan. That was broad.
Mr. Chair, I am too. The reason I was objecting too is that although you, you know, our member, Householder, was talking about it, yes, as a board, we all agree that we need to tell the public we're very concerned and that we want to be involved. But at the same time, she was already laying out the procedures or the specifics, and that's what I don't want to happen yet. I think that we want to, yes, give the support for the district to come forward with a, maybe a plan, maybe some information, whatever we want to do is get that information to us. Then we can make a decision as to how we want to go about it, how we want to be involved. I, I think we can't just push it on the district without getting, hearing from them.
President Hack, I'm, I'm struggling a little bit, because I do know that the front part says action by the board, but the motion as drafted, talking about creating a working group, and when you look at the explanation that trustee Householder requested this item be placed for agenda for discussion by the board, I'm a little worried that we might be going outside of that. I'm not 100%, but I am, that, that language worries me a little bit.
And that was the language I mentioned, in fact, that this was on the agenda as a discussion item, not as an action item. I know the options are there, but it should have been put on there as an action item upfront.
And generally, we're getting direction about how to move forward rather than the board creating a working group.
So as part of that discussion item, Christine offered to share some information with the district is already doing. So that would be, give it a background, so if you want to bring this issue back to the next meeting as an action item, you'd have some information to base your action on. That's my concern. But we're at a point where we have a motion and a second, correct? I'm looking at the board members.
Yes.
Okay. So, so the motion is to, I'm not sure what the motion was. What's the motion?
Form a working group to look at trauma and grief resources in response?
Yes. Okay.
And that working group would include?
Well, and yeah, and the stipulation for me is that that would, but then that would be a friendly amendment, so let's just take that away. That's just a part of the discussion. I was just offering that as like, you know, kind of pie in the sky ideas. But I think what's important is that there be a working group, trauma and grief resources in response. If, if the, you know, people don't have to participate.
So we have a motion made. We have a first and a second. Everybody understands what the motion is?
Would you take a vote by person?
We can certainly do that. Kelly, I want to, that would be, everybody's fun.
Trustee Householder?
Yes.
Trustee Lewis?
Yes.
Trustee Rocha?
No.
Vice President Hernandez?
Yes.
President Hack?
Nope. Passes three, two.
Okay, you form a group.
Okay. Onward. Dual enrollment. Fly the church.
Yep, thank you. So one of the things that I'm really keenly passionate about is providing opportunities for our young people. And that, you know, the items B and C sort of merge in that respect, but we, you know, we did them separately. So last, last board meeting, I requested more information around our dual enrollment programs. And what dual enrollment programs are, for those who may not know, are programs that allow students in, while in high school, to take courses at the community college. Typically, that's an agreement between the organizations, and it's at little or no cost to the, to the, to the young person. So after that, and after it was put on the board, uh, board agenda, I was reached out by Ms. Lindsay Wisely, I believe I pronounced her name correctly. And she let me know that there are dual enrollment programs. They are at Antioch High, Dozier Libby, Deer Valley, as well as Prospect. There's three different types of dual enrollment programs. One is concurrent, one is dual enrollment, and one are articulated programs which allow for very specific relationships and agreements. My question, and actually, I'm sorry, not before my question. In the conversation with Ms. Wisely, she said that she would be open to coming and giving a presentation around dual enrollment, what that looks like, how they promote it, and all those things. Obviously, we are not in a position to do an action item, but that's something that I would like to explore, you know, maybe, maybe in a future section of the agenda. But that's kind of where we are now. I was able to get details around what that looks like in terms of dual enrollment, concurrent enrollment, and articulated agreements. And I can share those with the rest of the board if, if, if there's interest there. And that's kind of where we are.
Or would they be, the teacher, the principal would be willing to come, do you think?
Ms. Wisely, you know, in the conversation, she said she would be, she'd be open to coming and, and giving a presentation.
Are there objections to that?
No.
I would love that.
Mr. Chair. I have a question. Does that include, I know the trades have enrollment too. Does that include the trades as you're doing this dual enrollment issue?
So dual enrollment, I believe, I'm, you know, I haven't read, you know, I haven't become an expert in it yet, but I believe dual enrollment will allow for it. I have a friend in a different district, or colleague in a different district, whose daughter is taking early childhood development, which kind of counts as a trade, I guess.
Right.
Because it doesn't require, it's a certificate versus, you know, an actual degree. And she's in high school, I believe, or a late middle school.
Yeah. No, I just wondered about the trades, because I know they used to go around into the classrooms and make presentations, reminding them how to sign up so they could become an intern or apprentice.
So that is exactly kind of the conversation that I'm hoping this leads to? Because if we, you know, I know that there was a big movement away from having the trades and school the woodshops and all those things in school.
Right.
Some years ago. But our community colleges are still offering these courses, and if we can allow our students to take those classes for little to no cost, I think, you know, this is a missed opportunity for those people that may want to go into the trades.
So when you, just for clarification, on a report, and you said that the two items kind of dovetail, can we combine them both and give you a?
Absolutely.
Okay.
And so, you know, I think the second piece that I would add to, to that, I think that we have a number of students who may not necessarily be interested in higher education. Higher education is a phenomenal option, but it's not for everybody. You know, we need carpenters. We need plumbers. Plumbers make considerably more than I do. So I think that this is something we need to promote, as well as the dual enrollment option. Because I think if families knew that they could potentially take classes at the community college, I think that that's something a lot of families might be interested in, to supplement, supplement their education. And it could also benefit our teachers, because it could help to reduce some of those class sizes that, you know, that were mentioned earlier. So, you know, two things, the presentation from Ms. Wisely, as well as maybe having sort of, I don't know, a media campaign or awareness effort to increase awareness, understanding that those programs exist and how to access them. One of the reasons why that's really important is, I think I mentioned it last time, Dr. Clyde Lewis, I sat with a group of students that were finishing high school, tried to complete the Contra-Costa Community College application. I did not know how to do it. Well, let me, let me rephrase that. I knew how to do it, but it was confusing. It took us much longer than it needed, needed to. So if we have this concerted effort through AUSD, we can reduce, and that could serve as a barrier. Because if I'm, you know, Clyde Lewis in high school, first-generation student, attempting to, attempting to enroll in community college, and that application is too difficult for me to do because my mom couldn't help me either, that may be the thing that stops you from going, pursuing higher education. And if we, as a district, can address that, I think that could be extremely powerful.
So I would love to see that presentation. I would also like to see, because Ms. Wisely's been with us for a while, I would like to see any recommendations for scaling, just again, thinking about, and for both, I think, trade, the trade careers and dual enrollment. And also, just a quick note, I am a product of dual enrollment. That's how I graduated early from Prospect. So I feel like I'm proof positive that dual enrollment can be very beneficial for students. So it would, it changed my life. I wouldn't have gone to college if I didn't, if I wasn't dual enrolled at Prospect, so.
Great, so it sounds like I've heard from two of you, just a nod of heads, if that's something the board's interested in, a district report?
Mm-hmm. Yeah.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
So did you mix both those together, or?
Yeah, yeah. So we'll get the dual enrollment agreement. I'm sorry, not agreement.
Presentation.
Presentation, and then maybe we can have a conversation at some point around, you know, maybe a, a media campaign or awareness campaign for the trades as well as dual enrollment.
So you're comfortable?
Totally fine.
B and C?
Yep.
Okay. Onward to eleven. Resolutions, first reading, there are none. Twelve A, we've already done that.
Mm-hmm.
Twelve B, resolution authorizing instructions to teach outside of credential. Jessica, would you?
This the board has seen quite often, a resolution, and there's lots of ways for a teacher to be qualified to be teaching a particular subject, so I would ask the board to approve that this evening.
And I'm going to ask my clarifying question that I ask every single time. This is, this is, there is articulation agreements between what a teacher can teach. It's not a math teacher teaching physics, for example.
Correct. Primarily, these are ones that do not have a standalone credential, also things like home hospital. And you have to meet the particular criteria under ed code in order to teach that, so.
Absolutely.
I'll move approval.
Second.
First and second. All of you see aye?
Aye.
Opposed? Passes by zero.
Mm-hmm.
Where are we? We are thirteen.
Mr. Chair.
Yes.
Mr. Chair, if we are on information, is that where our future agenda items?
Well, that's, well, we will be. Thirteen is a none, fourteen is a none, fifteen is none. Now we're in.
Okay. I'd like to speak on this, and I, I actually want to compliment board member Householder, because I think we're on the same thinking.
Like, moment by moment on this one, it's great.
Yes, because I'll tell you, it's interesting is how things happen. I've worked in nonprofits for many years. Wherever the money is, is where the organization goes. And right now, CSBA is working hard and trying to find a way to house our, our teachers. And this item hits us, because I had asked in the past if we could have some information as to how many pieces of land that we own that are available, and what could we possibly do with it, and what are we going to do in the future with it? And Householder and myself, Rocha, are both thinking the same thing, and that is, we might be able to do some future housing for teachers. So she has a beautiful plan here. Ellie, I won't take it away from you. I just want to support what you've said. And I was going to read here what it said on the CSBA Today's paper, that I, it's true, I do read these daily roundups. And it says, "Research, research reveal many public school districts and schools noted to key findings that research reveal many school districts," excuse me, "own properties that can be converted into affordable housing for educators. And fifty school districts in various stages are considering developing workforce housing." So I just want to bring it up for information, and I think she has got a beautiful paper here that discusses it all.
Yeah, and I've, I would be more than happy to, I already sent the item to superintendent Nello and Ms. Cavallaro, and it just really just was a very basic explanation, and it was a discussion of the education workforce housing report. And so I think we could both be, have our co-names on that. I think that would be a good signal to the community as well. Another thing too, in terms of future agenda items, because we had public comments about this, I would like to have a discussion about, what, discussion and action potentially, about online public comment submissions. And I would also like a discussion and action on library and library technicians. So, so yeah, the, kind of in line with what the public comment was earlier. And then those two in addition to the, the study, which I've already sent that to the superintendent.
Any other future items?
Yep. So I would like to request, I know I've brought this up a number of times, and this ties into the conversations that were had earlier. I'd like to give a present, uh, not give. I'd like to have a presentation by JRF, JRO, ROTC, a representative from ROTC, to come and talk about some of the, you know, benefits of ROTC, some of the challenges, and some of the ways that we potentially could consider, you know, introducing a JROTC program here in AUSD, because that's an interest of mine, so.
Mr. Lewis?
Yes.
Did we not submit a proposal for that? I mean, did we not send a proposal to the service for ROTC?
For a presentation? No, we haven't done.
No, presentation for, to be an application? Didn't we send an application?
We did send an application.
Yes.
Okay.
Okay.
Okay. But would an, would an, you know, for public consumption, would it be interesting, if the rest of the board agrees, to have a presentation by one of the local?
Well, we can't.
Yeah.
Yeah, not, not here, not, not staff.
Yeah, we can't hear your opinion right now.
Yeah.
Okay, I'll add that as a discussion item.
Yeah.
For the next meeting.
Okay. Any other future agenda items?
Nope.
Okay.
I have a comment when it comes down to nineteen.
Please. Eighteen. We have no additional cards, I don't think. Nope, okay.
I would like to speak on nineteen.
Reports and comments from the board members is what starts with.
Okay. I don't know how many of you have visited Antioch High School and have seen, what is the room considered called? I'm sorry, I should have asked you before.
I think it's, I don't recall. Something to do with equity and inclusion.
It's a multicultural room, for those of you that don't know. It's way back at the very end. And on the wall, I don't know how many of you know Ronald McDowell, Ronald McDowell. He's actually an artist nationally known, and on Sunday, they gave him a social in Pittsburgh, because he's a Pittsburgh young man. And he's been doing artwork.
Doctor McDowell.
Pardon?
Doctor McDowell.
Doc, I'm sorry, Doctor McDowell. I, I apologize. But I was taken and excited about going to see him, because I, I know what he did to the wall, but we never had a chance to thank him. And I felt so bad when I apologized to him and I thanked him personally, and I asked if he would come. And so I'm asking you if we could make, allow, you know, give him a, some kind of certificate signed by all of us, thank him for it, because the wall is beautiful. If you haven't seen it, you need to go see it. And he did it just like that, without a person being there. He took a picture and drew it.
Absolutely.
And he's very good at it.
And he's very good at it. Made a comment about it, about maybe we should take one person out of there and put the other person in there, but I won't tell anyone I'm thinking of. Anyway, I just wanted to say it was okay with all of you. I'll, I'll set the motion and have, give them some dates for them to come forward, and we can present them with a thank you.
Absolutely. And I think, you know, these are the types of things that we need to be celebrating in AUSD. We hear about the challenges, we hear about the struggle, and all, all those are extremely important. But we also need to hear about some wins, some of the positive things that are happening. And I think that's an example that we can, we can definitely show as well.
It's beautiful. You have to go see that room. It's gorgeous. And the students all get to see it. They go through there.
And Ms. Trustee Rocha is actually in the mural.
Yep. I was about to say that.
I was a female or Hispanic mayor?
I was really taken back because he told me he remembered me as a young man, and I, you know, you go and do things you don't know, and the outcome, but for me to know him is, I mean, he's famous. I was taken back.
Now we have to go look at it.
Right.
Yeah, that's right. You have to go look at it. Thank you. I'll do that.
Anybody else have any comments?
Uh, yeah. So I want to apologize to the board. I know tomorrow we were supposed to have our governance training. It was a messed up on my part. I double booked. I'll be speaking tomorrow at UC Berkeley, or I'll be home, but it'd be via Zoom, UC Berkeley, for the Berkeley Executive Coaching Institute. We will be having a panel discussion around, well, it's for African-American History Month, and it's around understanding who I am as an African-American male. And there are four, there are three panelists, and each of us are coming with different perspectives and having conversations about that. And if folks are interested, I can send the, or share the link. Yeah. Thanks.
Any other comments?
Nope.
Yeah, I can go next. Yeah, so I just wanted to share, this past weekend, I was at the Masters in Governance Training for CSBA.
Oh, good.
And that was a really cool, fun experience, getting to, you know, continue to develop my skills on the board and getting to interact with board members from all over the state. So that was a really cool experience, and just kind of wanted to share that, you know, I'm continuing to learn more, continuing to grow whenever I can, and all those abilities. I also want to continue sharing about the great books that I've been reading, the great children's books, and the one I want to highlight today. It's really a very great book that I enjoy a lot. It's called Freedom Soup. And it's really about the story of a mother and her child. It's a Haitian family, and it really explores the ways that culture and food is part of our history and part of what defines us and part of the way that we interact with each other. And so I definitely encourage anyone listening to check this out, read this with your child. And, you know, I'd encourage actually the rest of the board to read this book, because it's really good to keep in mind that all these different things, culture, history, food, are things we should be thinking about when it comes to our students, because they all do interconnect, and they are part of education at the end of the day.
Okay. Anything else? All right. We go to the last one, future meetings. On here, I have big X to February 24th. Glad you just mentioned that. We do not have a meeting tomorrow night, but we do have a meeting on March 9th and April 13th. Do you need a motion adjourned?
I want that motion.
Second.
Clyde, first. Mary, second. All in favor, say aye.
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 Opposed? Five, zero.